The October 28th, 2014 meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I'm requesting everyone in the audience, please turn off your cellphone or put them on vibrate. At this time, I would like to recognize that members of Troop 563, under the leadership of Ludric Olson, are in the audience to observe the meeting for their citizenship and community badges. Would you all please stand? Thank you. Madam Secretary, please call a row.
Mr. Ron Crawford, District 5.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Stacy, District 1.
Here.
Mrs. Carol Ely, District 2.
Present.
Ms. Angie Boynton, District 4.
Here.
Mr. Bobby James, District 3.
Here.
Mr. George Tomlin, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Stephen Lake, Board Attorney.
Yep.
Up to thirty minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County school system or the school board only. Presentation to the board are limited to five minutes and are being televised this evening. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters in which the board customarily take action, you must first complete a Goldenrod Form located on the front table. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete the green form. This form must be fully completed and received by the board secretary no later than 5:40 PM. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Before you begin your presentation, it is required that you state your name and address for the record. Matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsion, will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents wishing to address the board regarding a discipline matter will have the opportunity to do so at that time. I will now ask the school board's attorney to explain some additional points. Mr. Lake.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you're planning to address the board tonight, please be certain that you have received the procedures which were on the front table and Mr. Christian has in his hands. I want to call your attention to the fact that no one can make a presentation unless prior to 5:40 PM they've turned in one of the Goldenrod Forms, fully completed, to the school board's assistant. Subject of the presentations must be directly related to a matter on the board's agenda tonight or a matter which customarily appears on the school board's agenda. Any use of students' names except by that student's parent or guardians is prohibited to protect student privacy.
Okay. Brenda.
Mr. Ross Rayner.
Good evening. My name is Ross Rayner. I represent Florida Transportation Systems in Tampa, 7703 Industrial Lane. And we are the Bluebird School Bus Distributor for the State of Florida. I'm here tonight with regard to Agenda Item 39 and a proposed request by the Transportation Department for the board to approve purchase of forty-four buses. We'd like to be part of that discussion. And if you'll please turn to page two, I want to bring a quick note that the equipment that is before you and the equipment that we sell, the Bluebird bus, is the same. The engine's the same, the transmission is the same, the transmission equipped with a FuelSense technology. If you'll please turn to the next page, you'll see an excerpt from the Price and Ordering Guide from the Florida Department of Education. That's the attachment to your agenda item you see tonight. The next page notes capacities. Quickly in passing, the wheelchair-equipped bus, which you're discussing this evening as part of that purchase, the Bluebird bus is actually three-capacity greater. And then if you'll turn to the next page, please, most importantly perhaps of this presentation, based on equipment specifications your Transportation Department provided us in March and the number in your agenda that you're looking to invest in buses, I've put together our numbers best I'm able. And we're in the neighborhood of $344,000 below my competitor. Equivalent of three more buses under your proposed purchase. And again, the capacity being a little bit greater on the Bluebird wheelchair-equipped bus. Delivery for us would begin in March if the purchase were to go through, as again your item suggests. The next page, I had the opportunity to speak briefly with Mr. Gregory on the phone, and while he was on his way out the door, he did bring a couple items to my attention with which he had particular interest. Air disc brakes are common in the industry and the competitor bus which you're considering and my bus, the brakes are built by the same manufacturer, Bendex, there's no difference there. Mr. Gregory also mentioned windows. Bluebird recently was recognized for their window structure by an industry publication. The seat structure you also mentioned, the bus you're considering, the seat back is a little bit higher than the Bluebird seat back. Again, they all conform to federal and state regs, so that's really a non-issue. The lower seat back does allow a degree of greater visibility by the driver as well as perhaps the cameras with which your buses are equipped. Slide-out battery tray, again, standard in the industry. The difference with my bus, the Bluebird bus, over the competition is we all have three batteries versus their two. And if you will then turn the page, you'll see a picture of a technician under the hood of this bus I'm proposing. Mr. Gregory did mention the ease of maintenance. This bus is built by Bluebird from the ground up. It's their chassis. It's not an International chassis, it's not a Freightliner chassis, it's not a truck chassis, if you will. Bluebird builds it from the ground up and the bus as a whole with the purpose of school transportation in mind. So again, if you'll turn to the next page, you'll see another point of note. Because of that construction, they're able to do some things our competitors can't. Compressors on top of the engine. The next page, I visited a couple different zones and visited with drivers and technicians. They gave it high marks. The drivers particularly will be happy and were happy with the fact that the steering tilts, telescopes, a 12-volt jack for them. The air conditioning you see shown, pictured, drives more air directly onto the driver. Greater comfort for them. Bluebird and safety have been synonymous for some eighty-seven years. I imagine you all recognize the Bluebird name. Again, the next page, if you'll look, SunTrust provided me a quotation, we commonly quote with them for financing, and you'll see those notes there. Again, the overall purchase in the neighborhood of $344,000 less. And I thank you for your time, I appreciate it very much.
Okay. Thank you. Mrs. Superintendent, if you want to...
I'd like to.
Come back. Come back up.
I really would like, since this is on the agenda tonight, did you provide this at bid time, at the time that they requested, or was this done after the quote?
There was no request. Actually, the attachment to your agenda item is the public document that the DOE uses and bus providers in this state are all included in that. They have to be within X percent of the competition when they submit their bids, and then the districts are free to purchase from that.
Okay, but did you see your competition's price before this was done?
I did because it's published. It's public record.
It's a state bid, Mrs. Stacy. It's all approved ahead of time. The state approves these and gives the district the opportunity to look at the various options and various things about the bus or any other subject that's on the state bid, and then the district chooses from that state bid.
Okay, y'all help me with this, Mr. Tomlin. You know what I'm wondering, you know?
No ma'am, I don't.
Okay, I'm wondering if we can save money and get three more buses, why didn't we go that way unless this was, his quote came after the other one?
This is the document, Mrs. Stacy, and anyone can have this. This is the published document from the DOE. It shows the different bus capacities, base prices, options, air conditioning.
So those prices were already available to our district?
Yes, ma'am.
These prices were available to our district at the time of the bid, at the time we put our contract together, is that correct?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
It would be, but, Mrs. Stacy, you also take into account that not every purchase should be based strictly on dollars and cents. There's a lot of other factors, especially when it comes to buses, that come into play. One, and I think this is, you know, I think Mr. Gregory solicited the opinion of our maintenance people, they felt more comfortable, from my understanding, with the Thomas bus than the Bluebird. We apparently have some Bluebirds in the fleet and we've had some problems with them. And so they're trying to look at minimizing any downtime that those buses would have. They felt that the, even just from my understanding of information I've gotten back from, they just felt more confident in the overall maintenance on these things. Having been on both the buses that were, and I think there were three considered, I got a chance to see, two of them, I did like the seats on the Thomas better. I did like some of the other maintenance items that they had in there. You know, I used to be in the truck leasing business at one time. It frightens me a little bit because even on our tractors that we had back when I was in the business, we only had two batteries on it. I'm not quite sure why there's a need for a third, but there may be and, you know, may be a good reason, who knows? I was more impressed with the air conditioning system because it was, as best I can describe it, as a three-phase system where the parts of it can be turned off when that bus is deadheading back to the bus barn, you know, like that. There was a better view, I thought, for the driver on the front window where they were able to look out. And, you know, one of the reasons why we had that swing out in front of the, on the buses now is because of children being hurt in the past where they walked right in front of the bus.
Yeah.
And so now we're trying to push out. With this thing, it even enhances, you know, that. But I'm just saying is, you know, price is important, but we're also looking at, you know, this spread over to basically itemize back over fifteen, at least a fifteen-year period, if not more. Remember, some of the buses were running, are twenty years old, and that's what we're trying to do is improve on the fleet. So I would just hope that you would, you know, keep that in mind when you're looking at it.
So basically, it looks like about a six or $7,000 bus price? Is that, am I right?
In that neighborhood, if you average over the forty-four buses, taking into account the fourteen of the proposed purchases...
And you don't have the phase, the three-phase air conditioning in yours?
We do, in fact, it's an option.
But that would cost more probably.
Oh, yes, it's going to add some to it.
So that would eat into that six or $7,000 profit?
It will. And again, the last time I visited, not specifics, was March. And at that time, we were told there wasn't any upcoming purchase.
Have you challenged the bid process at all? Or challenged the bid at all, or done, put a formal...
Well, this we cannot challenge, of course.
Okay.
We're part of this.
Okay.
This isn't, I'm not here today meant as a challenge. I'm here to be sure that we're part of the discussion.
Okay.
Okay.
You can, you may.
My question is from Mr. Gregory.
I'll call him.
Okay, please.
Okay. Thank you. I'll have Mr. Gregory come up for a minute.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Gregory, Ms. Boynton.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Were you made aware of this already, sir?
I've seen those documents yesterday.
And what are they offering at Thomas that's the difference between the packages?
I think the packages are very similar. It comes back down to the maintenance and what our mechanics are very comfortable with. They've checked out all three brand names, the buses. They were very much sold on the Thomas. And these are the people that are working on the buses, and these are the people that I'm going to depend on to tell me what they want in their, in our fleet. And so based on their recommendation, that's what I, what we recommended to you tonight. And...
I definitely respect the mechanic's opinion, as well as Mr. Crawford, who's been on these buses and has been in the business. So I appreciate all the time you spent, Mr. Crawford, looking into the purchase of buses.
Well, that's exactly right. We involved Mr. Crawford and the rest of you were invited, but Mr. Crawford, with his business background, we felt like it was very important to get him involved. And we rode, you know, and we saw and we talked to the mechanics, and this is what we felt comfortable with. And I'm going to go and stand by with what my mechanics tell me they think is best for our fleet.
Just at one point, when I talked with you and referenced this, you did indicate that you had to check with other districts to look at what their finding was as well.
We checked with other districts. We asked them, based on, you know, their purchases of the Thomas buses, how did they feel, you know, what was the result, what were the, what was the data showing them? And they were very comfortable with their decision that they went with Thomas in the last couple of years. So we checked with other districts to find out if they're having any issues.
So you checked the history of the buses as well? Okay.
Did you find it, just out of, because I just need my questions answered, what type of problems were different with, do we have the Thomas in our fleet?
We do not have any Thomas in our fleet at this moment. We have the International and we have the Bluebird.
So the Thomas will be an addition, something that we've never had here before. So tell me what our mechanics liked so much about the Thomas that they've never worked on a Thomas?
They liked the ease at getting to the different, you know, obviously under the hood. They liked some of the conveniences, as the individual from Florida Transportation said. Some of the maintenance was similar, the slide-out tray. He indicated they have three batteries where Thomas had two. That was something that our mechanics liked, was the slide-out tray. They liked the, they liked the fact of the wheelchair lift and how Thomas has it structured on their buses versus the other two. So it was just minor things that kept coming up. Mr. Crawford mentioned the side window that gives you visibility of that kid getting up and off the bus, you know?
So that's something different, that Bluebird doesn't offer that same window?
Not as much, when you look out the window. On the Thomas, it just seems to be a better view.
Well, okay. I mean, coming to me at the last hour, when I know that we need the buses and I know where we're at, I wish that the gentleman had come to the board before now.
Well...
But I know that we have transportation issues and we have things that are pressing us, and we've been looking at this a long, long time.
Yes, we have. And, you know, the mechanics are the one that I'm going to base the opinion of, and they like the Thomas bus, nothing against Bluebird, nothing against IC. But bottom line is, they felt very comfortable with the Thomas bus and what it will present or give to Marion County.
Well, if the view is better and safer in the window area for the children, you can't put a price on that.
That's the way we feel. Yeah, it's a couple hundred thousand dollars more, but at the same time...
In the long run, yeah.
Okay, thank you, test.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory.
Okay. Thank you. Brenda, who's next?
Ms. Carolyn Torrey.
My name is Carolyn Torrey. I reside at 1202 Southeast 14th Avenue. And based on just this prior discussion, I want to thank you, Nancy, for putting child safety number one. Ron Crawford, thank you for your work in looking into that because we have had, busing obviously is a very dangerous situation. If we can make it safety, safer, that's good. I'd like to pass out and consider it to be added, and welcome Mr. Stephen Lake. I welcome you as new council, and I hope that we all have a chance to sit down and go over some things that I believe there still need to be addressed. One of the things I'd like to pass out is the Global Ethics University, From Bad to Worse, Avoiding the Classic Cover-Up. And I wish that would be passed around and read, please. This is going back a long time, but it's still here. I had a complaint about issues in a classroom, and I was steadfast because nobody addressed it. It's been years, and when we got into, when there was a complaint about the heat and lack of water provided in the classroom, I have now found out through the discovery process that the child's at the school where this happened, to my surprise, the individual that worked for Marion County Public Schools, and here's the documents, and I'll share this with your attorney because I've already sent this, they've already have it, that our tech support person for that, when we had to find him to depose him, was listed in the pedophile list. Found the police report, which described him as being in another neighborhood while we were complaining about the heat and air. You have the Auditor General's report about, they don't know what was going on in the heat and air. Here's your copy. We complained about what was happening to our children. You had Agenda Item, the teacher was resigning mid-year. Those documents are now missing from her, from her file folder, my recent check. It's, but it is on the school board minutes. You have now an email where I had concerns about addressing child abuse and neglect. Here's your emails. I sent more recently, I did a check with the police departments on the particular teacher that I complained about. Numerous sheriff's office reports. I provided it to you guys, and it's still here. You have the email, you can go through your server, you can see that I've sent it to you. And when I spoke to the person that I was directed to bring it to, it seems like that wasn't included. Here are the police reports. There is noting in the sheriff's department about concerns about DCF, and there's also DCF documents that support the concern. Here's your documents. These are sheriff's office documents, you are welcome to check those. You go by the address, go to the sheriff's department, and you can pull them up and you can interview the officers. Now, this personalized, more recently, you are aware of what happened on 17th Street about unaddressed issues, where it came down to there was bullets being on 17th Street because people did not appropriately address them. And you have the data here. Those are our children, and it's still here. It needs to be dealt with. We have a child that has a limited future because no one listened. Thank you.
Okay, Brenda?
I want to ask you a question because I, I mean, I could barely hear you. From what I understand, you're saying that we have a teacher that's been arrested?
There's the reports. I'll let you draw your own conclusion. I am not going to make any assumptions. I will let, I'll be happy, go ahead and go through it. I'll forward it to you again so you can have the reports and you can, guys, can make your own determination.
What year, what year did this happen?
These are ongoing. There's a stack this high. There's an admission and there's an affidavit in one of the courts that she admitted making false reports. It's an affidavit to the courts.
Thank you.
Thank you. Brenda?
Dr. Overcash.
William Todd Overcash, 14311 Southeast 128th Street, Oclawha, Florida. Sorry, I look like a bum. I was down at Alfie's. I know the owner's Alfie's. I was helping them do a remodel down there, making use of some equipment that I use. So I apologize for looking like a bum today. I have several concerns here, and one of them I kind of raised, I don't know much about the school buses or anything like that. I agree with listening to mechanics, I think that's pretty important. But I do know some of the new school buses are out and present today. If you look at them from a rear approach, they have an upward slant on the rear so that they are rear-ended because of a pileup. The bus goes over the car that hits it from behind rather than be crunched in on your children. I don't know who manufactures that, but I think for our children's safety, I would definitely consider that for a safety issue. Same thing is, I have the documents with me. I'm not going to share them here at this moment, I'll let your attorneys know this, but I have under discovery email communications from one of your school teachers using expletive language. And what his email does is, is his standard email, every response, he has a standard expletive across the top that has a series of numbers, slashes, pound signs, question marks, and then we'll leave the rest of the language unsaid. I have those documents, and your school attorney are more than welcome to speak to my attorneys. Henry Faro is one of my attorneys, and you can contact him and we'll provide those documents. Third thing is, I have done recent discovery that she is no longer working in the same position, but she was one of your healthcare assistants at the Osceola School. And let's just put it this way, it's very clear that she has done false testimony in another case that I'm unrelated to because I am privy to the depositions of those cases, and we will proceed from there. The fourth thing is, I think that when we look at the school budget and your taxes and everything else, I think you need to be very careful because, and I brought this information to you, I have not seen any review of the information, I've seen no research or anything. Denmark is one of the best teaching systems in the country. And when you take a look to be a teacher in the Denmark system, you must have a master's degree. Not a bachelor's degree, a master's degree. Not all of your teachers have been fully qualified for bachelor's. They've been in the process of their certification and you've had them teaching. When you look at the benefits, salaries, and everything else that are paid to our teachers in this county, much less nationally, versus what they're paid in Denmark with those high degrees, they're equivalent. We need to equilibrate this and bring the standard of care and teaching of our children to a higher level. This is ridiculous. You sit here and you hear criticism of our education in this country. And here we are, we're using, no offense to bachelor's degrees, but let's move in appropriate direction and educate our children. It's very critical. I gave that data to you, that's not my data. That's United Nations data, that's data from the EU and data on the US. And Florida has always been ranked one of the worst schools in the country, school systems in the country. You need to look at your teachers. On top of that, this school board, my opinion is, this school board, you're elected by we, the people. You represent us for the welfare of our children. There are multiple issues with teachers. Today, I was at outside taking care of some extra pieces of equipment, and I was just unloaded on, when we were, not me fussing, we were talking about the school system. I was unloaded on about one of your principals at one of your downtown middle schools, about his attitude. And I'm not the only one who's heard this. So I'm going to inform you right now, you're bordering on a RICO lawsuit, and I definitely have parents prepared to do that. And on top of that, I'm telling you right now, we're going to institute a website, and I want every single parent to come forward and detail their issues with students. I called Miss Stacy, I gave... You sit here and you hear criticism of our education in this country. And here we are, we're using, no offense to bachelor's degrees, but let's move in appropriate direction and educate our children. It's very critical. I gave that data to you, that's not my data. That's United Nations data, that's data from the EU and data on the US. And Florida has always been ranked one of the worst schools in the country, school systems in the country. You need to look at your teachers. On top of that, this school board, my opinion is, this school board, you're elected by we, the people. You represent us for the welfare of our children. There are multiple issues with teachers. Today, I was at outside taking care of some extra pieces of equipment and I was just unloaded on, when we were, not me fussing, we were talking about the school system, I was unloaded on about one of your principals at one of your downtown middle schools, about his attitude. And I'm not the only one who's heard this. So I'm going to inform you right now, you're bordering on a RICO lawsuit. And I definitely have parents prepared to do that. And on top of that, I'm telling you right now, we're going to institute a website and I want every single parent to come forward and detail their issues with students. I called Ms. Stacy, I gave her information about a student who is considered underperforming, he's not a very intelligent child with low IQ. He comes in and he sells candy and little junket toys at Lake Weir High School and in there are drugs. This is ridiculous. You have children being bullied at Lake Weir High School. This is ridiculous. So I'm going to tell you, I'm going to set up a website and I'm going to have full staff available and we're going to find out and we're going to gather, and if I have to do wall-to-wall, door-to-door to every parent to find out what the problems are with teachers and the care of students, we're going to do it. You need to clean it up. Okay? Thank you.
Dr. Overcash?
I'm sorry, Dr. Overcash, you didn't give me anyone's name, you just told me there was a student.
I did not, because I didn't want to violate the confidentiality of that name since he's a minor.
The principal was contacted and all they can do is watch because we have no name and there's 2,000 students and...
How many children have you had beaten at Lake Weir High School? How, what, about a shooting that occurred at Walmart that was related to a little internal dispute going on at Lake Weir High School? You have issues you need to address for the safety of our children.
Let me just make sure that we stay on task here now. One of the things, Mr. Superintendent, I know we have a side to this in fact, this is not the form for it. Thank you. Brenda Hoodby.
Hi, my name's Christine Touchton. I live at 730 Northeast 30th Avenue, Ocala, Florida. I was just wondering by a show of hands because Bobby James...
Please do not poll the board.
Angie Boynton, okay. I'm just wondering, Bobby James, Angie Boynton, Carol Ely, Nancy Stacy, and Ron Crawford, you were out during all, during the election campaigns and you saw time and time again where parents, students, voters, we all want these, should this ad valorem tax pass, we want to know if you're going to be willing to really apply it towards art and music and librarians because just prior to that, there's some very broad verbiage that means that it could be used for anything. And so I was going to poll you because I want to know, you heard, each one of you have heard people say that these should be included in our schools, that they never should be taken away. That's the creative side of learning. That's what helps give you a break in between science and math and the language arts. It gives you a break so that your subconscious and your conscious can think about some of the things that you learned while you're using the creative process. And so I'm just here as a concerned citizen hoping that you, as informed, as an informed school board, will stand up and do the right thing and, and put the arts and the music back in. Music is a language. It's a language, it's a universal language across the whole world. And it's, it's an amazing way, children who take music, they score better in science and in math and in language skills. So I'm just here to encourage you to please, to make sure that these things get put back in the classroom because they never should have been removed. Thank you.
Ms. Ely?
Ms. Touchton, as a board member, I will make sure that these programs, if this ad valorem tax passes, will be overseeing, oversight committee, that's part of the verbiage, we're responsible. You know, we're the ones that wanted everything back in. I will make sure, as all of us will make sure, that these programs are back in place like they were before. And you're right, we do need music and art and PE. The PE, there's not one that's more important than another, so I totally understand.
Well, we only have 12 years to mold our young people. 12 years. And these are the things that help shape our individual students and make them well-rounded individuals so that when people are talking on a specific subject, they don't have to sit there and keep their mouth shut, that they can, they can add something to the conversation because they have the knowledge. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Touchton, I want to thank you for addressing the board today and letting us know your concerns. And of course, I would, you know, make sure if that ad valorem does pass, that it's used for what it's for. Remember, like she said, it does have an attachment to it saying that there will be an oversight committee that would monitor our spending on that. So rest assured, if it does pass, we will do the right thing because it's about our children.
It is.
Thank you.
And we want well-rounded citizens that want to stay in Marion County and want to raise their, their children here too. And we don't want a bunch of ignorant, not that we have that, but we, we want everyone to be able to, to have the very basics. They may not be able to afford piano lessons or violin lessons or flute lessons, like when my husband was working as an engineer, we could afford our children. But at least they could learn to, to read music and they can be exposed to some of it in the schools.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Brenda, do we have anyone else?
That's it.
Okay, I want to thank all the speakers for addressing the board tonight. Thank you. At this time, Ms. Jacqueline Ballis, Program Specialist for Science, and Ms. Bobby Knighton, Program Specialist for Math, have a group of individuals with them to assist in providing the inspiration and leading us in the pledge this evening. Ms. Ballis.
You always have a smile, Jackie.
I do, and I am so happy to be here tonight because we have some wonderful things to share with you. Tonight, I have first of all, one of our teachers that we're recognizing, Ms. Vicky Ambrose, who's going to come forward and do the inspiration. So, Vicky, I'll let you come forward.
Good evening. We are here on this special occasion to celebrate the achievements of these students and teachers. William Butler Yeats once said, "Education is not the filling of a pail, but the lighting of a fire." Educators once thought that children's minds were like empty pails for teachers to fill with knowledge. We now know that children come to school with their own ideas and misconceptions and have to be inspired to learn and motivated to change those misconceptions. For the past 20 years, as an elementary science lab teacher, my goal has been to light a fire in my students with a desire to learn science. Fortunately, children are naturally curious about the world around them and are always trying to make sense of it. Their enthusiasm is contagious and it motivates me to make lessons fun and interesting. I build on their curiosity by giving them hands-on activities that are engaging while helping them understand difficult science concepts. Since I teach kindergarten through fifth grade, I've had the unique opportunity to watch children grow from eager little fifth-grade scientists, or I'm sorry, five-year-old scientists, to become sophisticated science students as fifth graders. When they leave my school, I feel they are ready for the rigors of middle and high school. So why is it so important to build a foundation in elementary science? Today's society demands scientific understanding from all students. They must be able to understand basic science concepts they see in the world every day. Examples include science in the news, such as the recent Ebola crisis and how to control a virus from spreading, conserving water, comprehending significant weather warnings, and making important nutritional choices. I know many of my students will be choosing medical and engineering careers to solve problems that don't even exist yet. The future job market will have changed radically so that workers will need a background or degree in the sciences, mathematics, technology, or engineering. Thus, the focus on STEM as a means to address that need. As an elementary science teacher, I've had the opportunity to engage students in numerous STEM activities. I love to see the aha moment on a child's face, that sudden look of understanding where you see the impact of your teaching. I also give my students a glimpse of those careers by inviting engineers, scientists from universities, marine biologists, and even electricity technicians to share their knowledge. This experience connects science to real-world applications. I'm certain that these positive early experiences in STEM education will enable students to become the problem solvers of the future. In closing, I would first like to thank the school board for supporting the magnet program at our school. I love my job and I feel so blessed to have spent 20 years of my teaching career doing something for which I have a passion. I would also like to thank the Central Florida STEM Alliance for this recognition. I consider it a great honor. And I would like to thank my mentor and friend, Jacwa Ballis. She has done so much to further my knowledge in science education. But most of all, I would like to thank my students. While teaching them, I have been a science learner right along with them. As they showed me an enthusiasm for science, it inspired me to be a better teacher. They have instilled in me a passion for science education. Thank you.
And many of Vicky's students are here with us tonight to be recognized also by the STEM Alliance. So we have Mariah Hamby, who's going to lead us in the pledge tonight.
Would you please join me for the pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
I'd now like to introduce some folks here from the STEM Alliance who would like to just address you for just a minute and tell you about their program. I have Captain Nakagawa. He is an outstanding individual, graduated from the U.S. Naval Test Pilot School, went on to the space and naval warfare systems. He is now managing director of our STEM Alliance and he also works for the Florida High Tech Corridor. And so he'll be coming and we also have Fran Karosik, who has been a business development executive with Tri-Bridge, and that's a technology service that functions on business applications and cloud solutions. So they're going to come and help us present our STEM Alliance awards, which used to be our PRISM awards. We've had a change, so that you might remember our PRISM group. It's the same group, just a new name and a new giant focus. So please come forward.
Well, thank you very much Superintendent and Mr. Chairman and the board. We come here representing the Central Florida community. We work very closely with the school board's coalition across the 10 counties of Central Florida. And so not only do we represent leadership of the community of Central Florida, but also we represent being parents of kids in public schools as well as going through technical educations ourselves. So we just think it's incredibly important to motivate kids at such a young age and then all the way through their K through 12 learning experience. We've seen it in action and we employ that in the businesses that we're in. Mr. Karosik's here, representing the board of the STEM Alliance of Central Florida. And what the STEM Alliance is, is doing is, first of all, giving awards to motivate teachers and students throughout the school systems, but also delivering programs such as STEM Connect, which would bring an expert of some kind of technical field directly into the classroom, either in person or by a virtual connection with web cameras and a go-to-meeting connection. Engineering is elementary for elementary school students and Lego Robotics for middle school students. And those are the programs that we bring. One of the things that we need to do very strongly is to connect that industry tie to school systems and we're doing our best to make sure that that happens across all of Central Florida. And so we appreciate the chance to come into the meeting and present these awards. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're going to first recognize our, the STEM Alliance recognizes outstanding students and outstanding teachers. So we have three teachers to present tonight, Mr. John Jacobs, Sandra Crusher, and Vicky Ambrose. So if you three would come forward. And just stand in front of the school board. Stand in front and face the audience, please.
Parents, we're trying to get you all in. I know you want to see your lamp chocks and they deserve to be seen.
I'm very pleased to recognize these three outstanding teachers. We have first, John Jacobs. John's right here. And he is from North Marion High School. And we'll show you what one of these beautiful trophies looks like. They're really amazing. No, 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 don't break. So you can see how beautiful these PRISM trophies are. Okay? And then we have Sandra Crusher. And we have Vicky Ambrose. Oh, Sandra is from Liberty Middle School and Vicky Ambrose is our elementary representative from Dr. NH Jones, our science magnet school. So we're very proud of our teachers and they are receiving a wonderful trophy and a nice award from the STEM Alliance group. So make sure you keep care of those envelopes. Okay, thank you guys, and I'll let you have your boxes so you can keep care of those. That's Vicky's and this is yours, John. Sandra, you have yours?
Y'all don't run away now, guys.
So if you, and we're going to let our students come in next. We have quite a group to recognize. And I have my, I didn't introduce Bobby Knighton. Bobby is our secondary math program specialist and she's been helping me get everybody organized and together. So we'll switch. Okay, you guys come on in.
You're going to need to make two rows.
Let's do this, we have to turn sideways.
There you go.
Guys have done this before.
And if, when Ms. Knighton calls your name, just raise your hand to help our presenters get...
Tell all your names, I memorize them.
First of all, from Fort King Middle School, awarded for outstanding math is Cameron Martinez. From Denellin Middle School, outstanding math, Ysierra Aguirre. From Liberty Middle School, outstanding science, Sofia Lopez. From Fort McCoy Middle, outstanding science, Madison Hanley. From Fort King Middle, outstanding math, Alex Bochma. From Osceola Middle, outstanding math, Eric Shaw. Thank you. From Bellevue Middle, outstanding science, Yasmin Backus. From Osceola Middle, outstanding science, Skylar Pittman. From Forest High, outstanding math, Brandon Schultz.
And he is at a band competition playing a solo right now, so...
From Vanguard High School, outstanding math, Jacob Mosley. From Vanguard High School, outstanding science, Gabriella Sullivan.
And she's at another competition tonight, so...
From Forest High School, outstanding science, Haley Pittman. From Westport High School, outstanding math, Kevin Starr. From Forest High School, outstanding math... From Forest High School, outstanding math, Harris Cannon. From Vanguard High School, outstanding science, Mariah Hamby. From North Marion High School, outstanding science, Vincent Vaughn. From Forest High School, outstanding math, Philip Heath Smith. From Vanguard High School, outstanding science, Cassandra Mosley. And last but not least, from North Marion High School, outstanding science, Cody Les.
I just want to say what a great group this is, and I know I don't want to take too much time, but I'm getting a little teary-eyed because last time I saw Kevin and Cody and a lot of you guys, it was your very first time, and you were like little seventh graders, and now they're all grown up, eleventh graders. So that's one thing that is really great about the STEM Alliance, is that they continue to honor students as they keep their grades up, as they keep their requirements up, and they will continue to receive their sustaining scholar award. So we're real proud of our STEM Alliance scholars, and I think we should give them all the big hand. And while you're getting your great pictures, we have some water and some cookies in the foyer set up, so on your way out, please feel free to take a little refreshment.
Okay, Jackie?
Hey.
We've got work a little bit. We have to talk about these kids.
Thank you so much for coming. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, after you.
Yes, sir.
Just to remind the Board, this is part of the Central Florida Coalition of Public Schools, and I just want to thank the representative from now called the STEM to come down and really present our kids with the awards. And the thing that I'd like to just share with you all is that we are talking about ten of the larger school districts outside of Miami-Dade. So our kids are competing with the best in the state. So I just want all of you to know this. One of the things that I just have to say something about, for every bad thing that is said about a kid, thirteen people will hear about it. For every good thing is said, two people. You saw an example of a little bit of that tonight. We had people standing up here just running and just running our teachers down. And that just, you know, I was going to save it for my comment at the end, but this is no better setting than what I have right here. People, we have excellent teachers in our school district, and I just want all of you to know, you saw just four of them tonight, three or four. And I just want all of you to know that they do a tremendous job, and they have the evidence to prove it. They don't have this stuff where I heard this, I heard this in the shopping center or mall or something. They have the evidence to prove it. And again, we're going to step up for our teachers because you do a good job, and Jackie, as always, biggest champion. We do a good job for our teachers out there. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'd love to be a champion for our science and math teachers. It's a wonderful opportunity, and this has been a great, you know, to see these kids grow up and maintain their GPAs and maintain their requirements so they can stand before you as eleventh graders and receive this continuing award. So I thank you for your time. I know it took a lot, and it was really crowded, but it was really fun.
Miss Stacy?
And Miss Jacqui, you just always bring so much excitement to this room with your science and math and the brilliant children that you represent. And I want, I've known you for many, many years, and honestly, you just keep getting better.
Well, it is a privilege to work with, half of those kids are in the science fair every year, and I've taken them to state and international, and so that's my opportunity to really interact with our students, and I love it. It's just, it's really great.
Like Miss Stacy said, we have a lot of brains in this room.
Oh, yes. Those are more smarter than me.
I feel very inadequate right now.
Well, I just know the future's in good hands with our students.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie.
Thank you.
And thank you again for all you do.
Mrs. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I recommend approval of the agenda for the October twenty-eighth, 2014, school board meeting with the materials in the board packet. Those materials distributed to board members at the meeting, the audio recording and DVD included as part of the official record of the meeting.
May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
Second.
It was so moved by Mr. Crawford, second by Mrs. Borington. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passed, five zero. All in favors? We already did it, okay? May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the September seventeenth, 2014, attorney interview? September seventeenth, 2014, special board meeting. September eighteenth, 2014, administrative briefing and work session. September the twenty-third, 2014, school board meeting. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved. Second.
It was moved by Mrs. Ely, second by Mrs. Borington. Are there any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion passed, five zero. May I have a motion to approve Resolution fourteen dash zero nine, refunding of certificate of participation series, two thousand fifteen, not to exceed seven million, five, fifty dollars? May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
It was moved by Mr. Crawford, and second by.
Second.
And second by Mrs. Ely. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passed, five zero. May I have a motion to adopt the revised board policy, six point one seven three, bus examination and training? May I have a motion and a second?
So moved. Second.
It was moved by Mrs. Ely, second by Ms. Borington. Mr. Superintendent?
Mr. Chairman, this board policy has been revised to ensure safe bus transportation for all eligible students.
I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wish to address the revised board policy? Saying none. Board? Call the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of C nine, which has been placed on a regular agenda for discussion?
So moved.
May I have a motion and a second?
Second.
Okay, it was moved by Mrs. Borington, second by Mrs. Ely. All in favor?
Aye.
Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion passed, five zero. May I have a motion to approve the revised two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen district level staffing plan? May I have a motion and a second?
So moved. Second.
It was moved by Mrs. Ely, second by Mrs. Borington. Miss Stacy, you withdrew this item for discussion.
Yes, I withdrew this item. I understand that this is not the school plan, because I wanted the teacher, the music teachers and art teachers replaced, and I understand that this is not that budget. But I voted against the district budget and the school budget at the, last month, and I can't approve this, and I know this is just a revision to it, but if I vote for this revision, then I'm saying I vote for the entire budget. I've been looking for a full staff development plan with everything there. By removing the employee that we had as a coordinator, I believe that was her position, and we filled it with a specialist that we had, we should be showing a budget revision also, an additional ninety thousand dollars for the position that we actually have dissolved now. And so I am still waiting for my staff plan, staffing plan, with names, warm bodies, and salaries beside each person's name, and I will not be approving any changes. I might be the lone voter until I get that, so I will be voting no.
Okay. Any other board member?
I believe we've talked about the staffing plan numerous times, and we've gone over it, and we've asked questions.
No.
I believe that there's been a lot of input into this staffing plan, and I appreciate all of our administrators who've worked on it, and I'm ready to vote.
Well, what I'm talking about, Mrs. Ely, is not the staffing plan as an empty staffing plan. I'm talking about it filled in with positions and names and what, and what, and any openings that are not filled. Obviously, we have openings, because we're approving this, this change right now, where one of the openings was used. So I'd like to see the staffing plan, see what is filled, see warm body names by every single staffing position.
Okay. Any other discussion?
We've not been given that at all.
Well, Miss Stacy, I know you requested it a while back, and although I think it's needful to have, I don't think that we need to have it to vote on the plan, although I think, Mr. Superintendent, if I may say, that to put the names on it would give us a better understanding. Also, she's also saying she wants to see the reflection in an amended budget. Am I right? To show the position going away?
We lost a position.
And then adding the other two.
We, and the budget already had these other positions in it, so basically, we have like a ninety thousand dollar additional amount to the budget now.
No, ma'am, that's not accurate. In this particular instance, we had one individual who was a, either a supervisor or coordinator, Mrs. Needham, you did not approve of the recommendation that I made. We had it a very busy and a big position there.
But she was in our budget.
What we had done, we had an individual who's a program specialist and capable of academic services who left our system about a month or six weeks ago. We had not filled that position. Likewise, we had the coordinator position in Mrs. Needham's position. I downgraded that position to a program specialist, and I moved the other program specialist position that you already approved, that's already budgeted for, into that area. And now I have two different individuals doing the same job that Mrs. Needham was doing.
But they were both in the budget.
One is coordinating library, party music, and the other is coordinating textbook and our journey into the digital purchase and digital textbooks and also dual enrollment texts.
But weren't both of those specialists factored into the budget, those specialist positions?
The one program specialist was already in the budget, and the coordinator was in the budget, so it's actually less, less that we're spending for those two positions.
Right, that's what I'm saying. That's the less that I want to see. I want to see that difference.
Yes, ma'am. Mrs. Bossen Ellis and her staff are working on that. It takes a huge effort. I've directed them to do their jobs first and then to work on this project separately. It involves using our curriculum department, our personnel department, and our finance department. They're all working as hard as they can. You'll have that report.
I appreciate it. I've been asking for it now for quite a while, and I believe that we have a lot of vacant positions in there, and I believe there's some kind of stall game that's going on here, but we will continue to stall, and I will continue to talk about it.
Hey, I'm sorry you feel that way, Miss Stacy.
One of the things I'm going to say, now, we give Mrs. Ellis a lot of credit for the outstanding job she is, she's doing, but I don't believe she would stall and hold anything from us.
I don't believe it's her.
Well.
I didn't say her name.
That's her, that's her bellywag, and if she will get it to.
Don't put it on her.
When she, if she get an opportunity, she will get it to us.
Don't put it on her.
And also, names change weekly.
Yes, ma'am.
If you look at the resignations, the movement, so as soon as you get a report, Miss Stacy, it will, it will not be current, so.
I don't need help, Mrs. Ely, with what I've requested. I know what I need, and I know why. I'm just telling you. I don't need you to tell me. I know where I need it.
Okay, I call the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion passed, four one. May I have a motion to approve the following donations? One thousand dollars to Forest High School from Lockheed Martin. Ten thousand, sixty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents to Horizon Academy at Marion Oaks for Horizon Academy parent, from, for Horizon Academy Parents Teacher Organization. Fourteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars to Horizon Academy at Marion Oaks from Kid Central, Inc. Five thousand dollars to Lickware High School for Mark Summers Southwest Family Trust. One thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars to Maplewood Elementary School from Maplewood Elementary School, PTO. One thousand dollars to Westport High School from Arlene Duncan. Three thousand, five hundred dollars to Westport High School from the National Association of Secondary School Principals. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved. Second.
So moved by Mrs. Ely, second by Mrs. Borington. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion passed, five zero. Mr. Crawford, will you do the honors?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me just, as I have said in the past, thank the community for their generosity towards the public education system, the fact that people are, still will reach into their pockets and do a little more. I can't say thank you enough, so let me say, they tell me you should say thank you three times, so let me say thank you, thank you, thank you.
I know that thirty-five hundred dollars to Westport High from the National Association of Secondary Principals was for Miss Elsfordman, who was our national winner. I asked her, I thought, gosh, that doesn't seem like a lot of money, and she said, well, it will, it will buy three smart boards. So, you know, she's already looking a place to put that money at Westport High.
Miss Ely, did you give us a total for this?
Would you like a total?
Yes, ma'am.
Thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars.
Thank you.
Lots of, lots of good money.
While we, while we're looking at that, I have to say something in reference to Kid Central. Kid Central is really doing some really neat things out at Horizon Academy. Some of the programs that they, they have out there involve kids and after-school programs, and Kid Central is one of those, one of the organizations that really recognize the fact that when kids are at school, this is probably one of the safest and most rewarding times for a lot of those kids, and they have programs in the afternoon that keep some of those kids on the campus until five and five-thirty. And Kid Central is making it possible, again, by presenting that type of money out there. And hopefully, if Kid Central's out there listening, we would love for them to be a business partner with those, with the schools, and that's one of the key things that we, I'd just like to remind people of. Meeting reminders, the next administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for Thursday, November sixth, two thousand fourteen, at nine AM. The purpose of the work session is to review the work session topic for the two thousand fifteen Marion County, County Resolution on School Accountability, naming requests for Bellevue High School Stadium, and address the board guidelines for approving, approval at the organizational meeting. approval at the organizational meeting. We will start with our comments and I will start with Miss Stacy and I'll work down and Mr. Crawford, you'll be last.
Don't have a thing.
Okay. Ely?
I had the honor of going to Shady Hills Safe Halloween last Thursday where all the children trick or treat from class to class. They've been doing this since the 90s at Shady Hill and I know a lot of other schools have caught up with that new concept. It is a safe place. In addition to the shopping centers, the schools provide a very safe place. One thing that really struck my fancy was, you know, how kids bring in Santa Claus and stuff for pictures. This, the FFA, well, she's a special education teacher, but she has a 4-H club at Shady Hill. And she has a lamb, a goat, a pig, and a steer living at Shady Hill in the back in pens. And instead of me sitting with Santa Claus, I'm sitting with a lamb and a goat. And they took pictures, I think they made $6 a picture, but it was very unique. And I think the best part about her program is our kids at Shady Hill, as well as many kids, don't get to see these animals or learn about them or learn how to raise them or take them to the fair, whereas the kids at Shady Hill are now given that opportunity. And many of them go on to middle school to go into agriculture and 4-H. So thank you, Shady Hill. Thank you, Lindy Batten, who is the teacher at Shady Hill who's doing our 4-H program.
Mrs. Borton?
Nothing much, just to thank the staff, Mr. Superintendent. As you know, there was, I had numerous calls from parents dealing with transferring their child back into the school. And I want to thank the staff for really helping them and guiding some of those parents, you know. Just to see them coming back into our school system from different private schools is a joy. And I was really pleased with Mr. Burke and also his office staff really went out the way to help a young lady to get her daughter back in school. So I just want to thank you all for the good work. Thank you.
Mrs. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. James. A couple of things here. You know, last week, Board, we had our DOE visit, our District System Review. We had about 15 evaluators here in our district. They've given me a brief preliminary report, just a verbal, and we'll have the written summary for them and I'll be sharing that with you in the next month or so. It's already been mentioned tonight about our Public Education Foundation, fantastic programs and support for our schools. A brief report that we received this morning, Mr. Crawford serves on that Board as your representative. We had a very successful coupons for education season, this season. Over $130,000 will be going back into the schools that participated and over $66,000 going into the foundation for the various programs that they have. Fantastic programs they have and a great organization that supports all of our schools. And one more reminder, and I'm sure I'll be given another opportunity to remind you, but let's not forget our Veterans Day celebration on November the 11th, 11 o'clock in the morning at Veterans Park and hope to see you all there. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Just some things I just want to note. I had an opportunity to get out and visit various schools and our teachers do a tremendous job. And when I liked, I just love to say good things and kudos to the guys, to the guys out at Vanguard last night. I had an opportunity to see the Power of Football game. And guys, if you haven't seen one of those things, those things are brutal. The girls really enjoy those games. The fans really enjoy those things. And the thing that's really interesting about it, you have your teachers and people that have given up a whole week to make this an outstanding evening for those young people. So all these things that you hear about what we're doing in our school system, we really need to look at what our teachers really do. Because they really do a tremendous job. And that includes administration. When I say teachers, that's everybody. So Mr. Crawford, it's your turn.
All right, sir, thank you. And let me just say, a ditto to your comment on the teachers. We have a lot of hardworking people out there on the field that do marvelous things every day. And I've never, all the years I've been on the Board, I've never, I've never forgotten that. Even though sometimes when we've had some little dust ups. The Superintendent mentioned the Education Foundation. I have provided to Ms. Flotketter and you all can have it to review, a copy of their audit from their last fiscal year. The audit was outstanding. There's no other way to describe it. They're doing a tremendous job over there. They've got a lot of good things that they've got in the pipeline. And one of you is going to have the opportunity to serve as the Board Representative during the upcoming year. I strongly urge you to take the opportunity. If you, if you're the one, we have a, we have a wonderful foundation over there and I have really, the couple of times that I've had a chance to serve, I have really enjoyed it. So please do it. But do read the audit. It, there were some problems in previous years and those problems have been cleaned up. And I'm being somebody that's stickler for the dollars and cents, making sure that everything is accounted for. I was very happy to see it. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. Now, we recognize Mr. Lake.
Ready for the executive session?
Not yet. Just that part right there. You gotta read that.
Board Members, on behalf of Attorneys Henry W. Jewett II and Meredith Stevens, Law Firm of Rissman Barrett Hurt, Donahue &amp; McLean of Orlando, Florida, I'm notifying you that advice is needed regarding the pending litigation styled Secure Communications Inc. versus the School Board of Marion County, Florida. Pursuant to and compliance with Section 286.011 subsection 8, Florida statutes requested a session with the Board for the sole purpose of discussing settlement negotiations and strategy in regard to this litigation. I've asked the Board Secretary to cause reasonable public notice of the time and date of this session and the names of the persons attending to be published. As required by Florida statutes, only the Superintendent or designee, Board Members, and legal counsel can be present for the session. I've asked a court reporter to record the session, as is also required by statute. Her notes will be fully transcribed and filed with Brenda Flotketter as clerk of the School Board. Upon the conclusion of the litigation, the transcript will be made a public record.
We acknowledge your request. The terms appear to be in compliance with Florida statute. Board Members, you've heard our attorney's request. As Chair, I'm announcing an attorney-client session. The statutes state that I also must announce the commencement of the session, the estimated length of this session, and the names of persons attending. The session will commence after a five-minute recess to clear the room and allow the court reporter to set up. It will take approximately one hour. The names of the persons attending are Ms. Angie Borton, Mr. Ron Crawford, Ms. Carol Ely, Bobby James, Nancy Stacy, Superintendent George Tomlin, and Attorney Meredith Stevens and Stephen Lake. Before addressing expulsion matter, I wish to acknowledge, whoa, I wish to acknowledge Board Members have received an alternative placement list for students through the, through October 10, 2014. Are there any parents in the audience who wish to speak on behalf of a student regarding a disciplinary matter? May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student JD 15-03, JD 15-04, and JD 15-05 with educational service through the 2014-2015 school year? May I have a motion and a second?
So moved. Second.
It was moved by Ms. Borton, second by Ms. Ely. Are there any discussions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion passed, five zero. I call this attorney-client session. The business and televised portion of this meeting is hereby concluded and the meeting, and the meeting is in recess at? At 6:50.